I think we're eight fifteen. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda confirmation. Pat, anything to change on the agenda or anyone have anything they want to? Okay, do we need a motion whether there's no change?
I'm still a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda.
I'm a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes, any changes, additions, corrections, deletion, spellings, punctuation? This group's really getting kind of critical.
Yeah, I didn't, the only one I found, I didn't find it because I thought that was a different date.
The only thing was update on wellness room, is that what we called it?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay.
And of course, if I could respond, Commissioner Nelson, it's a dual role, a nursing room but also wellness room and the priorities for nursing.
Yeah.
Okay, no changes? Motion to accept. John, was that a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second, Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. On the consent agenda, does anyone see anything they want to discuss further?
I have one thing, it's on page...
Do you want to pull it from the consent agenda?
I don't know, I just, maybe I misunderstood it, but if you go to page twenty-three, it's under the grant contract for the sheriff department. If you go to the middle, where it says grant contract agreement, where it says original agreement thirty-four eight, it says matching requirement eighteen hundred.
Yep.
If you go down to the resolution, or the, the resolution ten twenty-three two C, which is on page twenty-seven, it's not, it doesn't say the eighteen hundred in there, does it need to say it in there? About the matching funds?
So if we make a motion to accept the consent, or to approve the consent agenda, just make a note to add the amount of matching funds for eighteen hundred in two C? Is that?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
To approve it?
To approve it with adding the eighteen hundred dollars.
Matching grant.
Matching grant fund in resolution ten or two C.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. Commissioners, open forum. Nate, anyone on open forum? Anyone wishing to speak at open forum? Hank, you're not allowed, anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll move on to reports and correspondence.
I didn't have much this last couple of weeks, I had the human services, pretty much everything's on the agenda and then senior council, which was just a nice visit, they again have their elder chat coming up on the twenty-fifth, I believe it is. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right.
I forgot we had our comp and, or not our comp, our ordinance meeting. Thank you, yes. I couldn't think of what the name of it was.
I had several, we had a rack committee and Dave's got somebody to point later.
Yep.
Good. Had update on the Dunlop's building where changes we got to make to comply with. Smart racks and so forth. Mark Birkey from Weefest was there and explained the conservation subdivision out there. Subdivision for sixteen homes and how it might work to help with a bike pack in the future going through there. And this location of these homes is pretty much to the south end of their property where there's a steep bluff going down the lake and they're not really utilizing it for Weefest camping though, so. I think the overall concept, everybody's tech panel met on it and they're all pretty happy with it.
How would they access that when Weefest is going on?
So it has its own drive, or private road coming in off Lake Ridge Township Road, right on the north side of the Gulfport.
Oh, so an extension of that?
No, it just goes in and eventually it'll be built to township standards, so eventually might be.
Yeah.
And then there'd be a slip down on the lake, down towards the flat, towards the north. Right now, I think they can have eight and I think you're gonna apply for variance for eight more.
Yep, for sixteen.
For sixteen and if we go lock and block, you could have eight tent houses up there and they all put on a steep bank.
How many, how many lots, how many, what's the lake frontage?
Lake frontage?
How much lake?
There's more, six hundred feet there, I think.
Six hundred feet?
Or more.
So that'd be, that's a GD lake, isn't it? So that'd be six lots on the water? I mean, which would be a lot.
Must be a hundred.
Yep.
I think they said they could have eight.
I think they get eight.
That must be eight hundred.
Might be a hundred, yeah.
They got as much as they want, you know, they got over three quarters of a mile.
Well, but that development is only.
Yeah.
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
So that'd be coming forward and Barry and I had sheriff's committee and pretty much all of that is taking care of consent agenda and be coming up. We discussed the corner position, which Todd will probably bring up. I did have my, a NACO meeting transportation committee policy this past week.
How much money we get?
No, no, yeah.
Good.
No, they had, usually have a speaker that presents for about fifteen, twenty minutes on certain topics and we've more coming up on that, there's some surveys that sent out and what our priorities are and for local funding. So I completed that and something else. And then we had environmental fund on Friday and I believe all that will be coming up a little later in the meeting to do with some purchases.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all we discussed.
That's all we talked about was buying, buying equipment.
Moving forward on transport, our garbage.
Yeah.
I think that's all I have.
I got, I got a couple of things, I was on, at a rack committee meeting with John, just a couple of things to add. Bucks Mills, they're, they're gonna put, they probably are doing it right now, because it was two weeks ago, they had a meeting and they're gonna start putting the fencing up around that one point six acres, so that should be done this fall pretty soon. Wantigan Park is getting turned over to Frazee by Halloween, isn't that right Hank? Wasn't, not, maybe not quite yet?
Not quite yet, there was, we got a note yesterday, there were some other paperwork that they needed and I think it's down at the bank and I don't know if it's actually in my account, so we're waiting for that, I'll find that out later on today. And then we're waiting for something from the attorney. As it.
Yeah. And then we, we talked a little bit about primitive campsites in Becker County, it's in various places like Chilton Park, Pickle Lake Park. And we kind of came to the conclusion that we need some more, we just got to figure out how to, how we can do that, maybe talk about some funding somehow when we get there and figure some of that out, so. And then the forester job is back open, they're still posted, the person that we offered it to didn't accept it, so. Anybody knows, anybody wants to be a forester in Becker County, let us know, or let Mitch know. I was, I also had a Dancing Sky meeting yesterday, just to remember, Dancing Sky is an aging, sixty-plus aging organization that, and it's in the twenty-one county organization and it goes all the way from Alexandria to Morris, all the way up to Lake of the Woods.
In a month.
What's that?
Barry's making comments about my age.
I think he's old enough to be on that.
That's, I'm not quite, yeah, I hope you know. So anyway, that, they, it was actually a really good meeting, they, they did a, in September for, I can't remember what the name of the organization was, they, they had a PowerPoint presentation where they went, they took you on like a virtual tour of all, every county that, where they did, then they had every county they'd been to where their, their staff or some of their staff had done some, where they did a dementia friends thing or they did, they just were at a organizational meeting and they had, Dancing Sky was represented or whatever they did, and it was really cool because they showed how they went to the whole area. And so that was neat. One thing we did find out, the, when we talked about that formula for funding from the state, remember we wrote that letter and to support that, well, it, it came in close, but one of the things that happened was is we, we had tried to get the rural funding down to fifteen percent, I mean, the rural funding up to twenty percent and minority funding down to fifteen and the rural, the rural funding did go up to fifteen, but the minority funding stayed at twenty, and so here's, here's a couple negative effects of that. The Red Lake reservation is no longer going to be funded by our Dancing Sky organization, it's going to be funded by, there's, there's another aging organization and they're going to join the tribe organization. So we're, Dancing Sky will lose that funding and then, and they're, you know, minorities, so they'll lose quite a bit of funding from that and then they're also going to lose some funding because the rural didn't go high enough. So in two thousand twenty-five, they're gonna have to make some cuts, so they're already looking at what they can do and they're, and they're, so they're not replacing, like if, if somebody leaves and they, or, or they need to move people around or they don't, or filling jobs are kind of sliding them over to other places, so they're looking at, it's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a significant cut, but it's gonna be a one that will have to be addressed, so. They're, they're not sure exactly how much it'll impact, but it will impact them some. And they did, they did however, get a new grant that they, that we approved and for a hundred and sixty-six thousand for senior nutrition and it, for the remainder of this year. The, the state is now requiring something different, they used to be able to carry over that grant money if they didn't use it all, but now they have to allocate it before they can carry it over, so. You can allocate it for two thousand twenty-four for, let's say, the Parker Rapids area dementia center or whatever that's called, but you have to do it in two thousand twenty-three or you can't carry it over to the next year, so. So, so they're working diligently on that and they have to have that done by December first to get it approved. And then I had a, well, I had human services with Erica and the historical side, didn't have a historical society meeting, but I wanted to remind everybody about the haunted house at the old jail here on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, or twenty-eighth of October, or is it twenty-ninth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, so it's Thursday through Sunday. And then also the Da Vinci exhibit, they are, they scheduled a couple of schools already to come and, and view it. There are a lot of out of town people that have been visiting the Da Vinci exhibit, not as many in town, I think they're probably waiting for the weather to get not quite as good, so they have something to do, but it, if you haven't seen it, it's cool. And then I talked to Becky Mitchell, the executive director, this morning and she had a couple questions about using, about the jail, and I know she had talked to you, to our sheriff a little bit, but she would like to, there, there are no public restrooms up there, so that could pose a problem, so she would like to be able to put a porta potty outside somewhere where people could use it. So I told, I don't know where that would be, but it would be for those four days, and then I think she was talking to you, you and she had emailed you to about.
We had talked and I think the only place that would be would be now.
Okay.
I'm concerned. There's four days.
Yeah. Yeah.
If I could.
Yeah, no.
Commissioner, could I add something to the conversation? We, Sheriff and I actually spoke yesterday about it and I think, you know, probably the, the thing that we would like the board to endorse here because we were gonna have that discussion is using the bathrooms that we have here in the, in the courthouse and of course, that is secure, it's locked, so we'd have to have someone that would be able to give access to that door. There isn't a lot of things, everything is locked down in the building, but we'd want to have someone that is there in the hallway and then bringing them out, we don't expect a lot of people will have a need, but someone may have a need and we should be able to respond accordingly, so we think that is the solution, work with our custodians, but we also talked with, talking with our facility managers having someone on standby in that atrium, that open area where people go up the elevator, we think that might be the most efficient approach, but again, a porta potty is also an option, but.
Yeah, I see the issue with having it outside, people walking in by it, yeah.
I guess, are we talking about this restroom?
Yes, sir, we are, yeah.
Okay, then what, which elevator, this one?
No, they, they come in the front door and it's the elevator that faces out in the sheriff's office, right Sheriff? And, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So they're gonna be standing there and they're gonna go up the elevator, so at that point in time, someone may say, look, I'd like to use restroom and that would be a way to bring them into.
Mary, is your office secure, those?
And we wouldn't just have the door open for people to walk through.
Secondary haunted house, the whole.
Yes, couldn't agree more, yeah. Well, and I want to make sure that the board understands, we would have someone that would physically swipe people, walk them in, they would wait in the hallway, walk them back out, there would be that type of setup, we wouldn't just let people come in and come out because we could have people wandering, I guess. It seems like the best approach, but we're open, any ideas you have?
These doors, the doors are open quite often after hours, I mean, I think it's the biggest concern, we just try to keep people out. I'd put a little temporary gate across there.
Kind of what our thinking is, yeah. And we would keep our custodians apprised of the situation, they see someone wandering in a hallway dressed as a clown or something, you know, that's probably a straggler, but we'll.
Or commissioner.
Yeah, or commissioner, yeah. But we'll, we'll monitor it and, but I think that's the best approach.
So then I got one more thing that she had asked.
Make fun of yourself.
She would like to put a crashed UFO made, in the, in the front yard of the courthouse, so right when you come into the sheriff's entrance or the, by the DMV, on that little patch of grass where the hill is, and they're gonna make it out of two nine-foot diameter satellite dishes, so it's not gonna be huge, but she would, she'd, she'd like to have it there during the time we have this haunted house and if she can put it up earlier, they'd like to put it up earlier, if it's possible. I don't know, what do you guys think about that?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Grass is going dormant.
Sheriff will be getting all the calls on it. So.
So do we need, do we need to make a, do we need to vote on that or just say to do it and, okay. That's all I have.
I had environmental, John, we're gonna talk about that later, but then I had NRM with Barry.
Yeah, we had a real, real interesting proposal come across our, our desk and.
I'm just gonna let you go ahead and tell it.
Pat, what's, what was the name of the organization, the nonprofit that was looking to?
You're gonna put me on the spot, I'm sorry, I don't.
Well, anyway, we have this group that's come forward to us that's trying to look at Toad Mountain, if everyone's familiar with Toad Mountain is for sale and there's a nonprofit that's trying to keep really unique pieces in public hands or put them in public hands, and this is a very special piece of land. They are looking to do, putting together a funding package for, and they want it in county hands, for the county to move forward with, to purchase this through, through grant dollars. This would be numerous grants and they asked us, what are intent, I mean, they kind of said, what would your intent if you did have the land and both Rich and I kind of thought this would be a non-motorized hiking, hiking, you know, sightseeing, bird watching, kind of a non-motorized use area out there. It also has a couple, it has lake frontage and it has a couple pretty nice.
Really nice.
Lake places on there that we, I mean, if this did come to, we could look at, I don't know, the possibilities without our endless, if you could rent it out, you know, you know, weekly or it'd be kind of nice to have some of that or type of. So it's kind of.
Commissioner Nelson, it's Trust for Public Lands is the name of the.
Trust for Public Lands and they would coordinate the grant writing and the applications, but they wanted to know the, the feeling of the board if they should move forward and, and they thought that if it was a non-motorized, they'd have much more funding opportunities. My statement was, I think that sounds great, we don't have a lot of cash to put in the purchase, I didn't think, but because there will be upkeep as we move forward and I thought that, you know, that would be something where, that we would be looking at for the maintenance, you know, we'd be looking at doing that continually. I think the question, Richard asked a question, what is this on the tax rolls and, and I think they said eight to nine thousand dollars would be on the tax rolls to offset, and if it's county owned, it can't, we don't get PILT payments, if it's DNR owned, there's PILT payments and I, and I think that depending upon the funding sources depends on your PILT payment, so I think Mitch's numbers weren't quite accurate at that time because they were on the low end of tax forfeit land, but I mean, the DNR was looking at it, it would, it would be much higher PILT payment. I, I believed, again, depends on the funding sources, but if we did happen, if it did go, I mean, I think we could recoup that back into the county funds just by, by leasing those cabins very, very quickly, but there'd be some maintenance, so anyway, we said we'd be discussing it to the board, it's kind of a nice segue into Wantigan Park, be an asset to, to that park too, I think, if we could, you know, the proximity, I think we're, we are certainly the most, we're the closest outdoor recreation area for Fargo-Moorhead and it is a beautiful country, I think Pat and Mitch and Steve were out on the site on about as prime day as you could for overlooking the colors of the fall up on Toad Mountain and said it was amazing views and just a beautiful scenery, so.
One other thing that came to mind in talking about this that was brought up at the Wantigan Park discussion at our EDA meeting was I think there was a question of horseback riding, whether they're gonna do horseback riding at Wantigan and that might be, I know around Toad Mountain, they do a lot of.
Yeah, they, that was mentioned too, I don't, there was no, I mean, that, that's done out there, but there's, there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing off the table.
Lots of opportunities.
But.
It is the highest point in Becker County, I didn't know that.
Oh, really?
That's what he said.
Who won't say no?
The people that own it are interested in, I can't remember the names offhand, but they are interested in it being public land and, and they would like it to be county, in the county hands. So the next step would be us to say, yes, we want to look into this, I think we will have to, I mean, I think at that point we will incur some expense as an appraisal because the, that company needs a current appraisal to, to move forward and so if we are, if we do want to look for, look into this a little further and, and I think we'll have to expect some expenses and I think we should probably get those numbers down, you know, if, but I think it's pretty interesting, it's pretty interesting property.
Yeah, and that guy said he would, they would get, they would go after all the grants. He compared himself to pheasants forever, if that, that's the type, that's not who they are, but that's the type of, of work they do. And so.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we'd, I don't, hunting didn't come up, so I don't know if, if that would be allowed or not and, and I suppose if you want a lot of walking, I don't think you'd want hunting in that.
Especially at that time of year, you know, in the fall, you're probably.
Maybe you could, maybe.
Yeah, there's plenty of places.
Maybe you could have, there's a, there's a spot here or there for archery, you know, archery might be different than rifle, so, I mean, I don't, we didn't discuss that at all, but it was very interesting, we, we were on a team's meeting with them and, and you, you don't want to get too excited because it's, you know, it's not the, you kind of whether, wonder if it's going to ever come into, but when you have the parties willing to, I mean, they want this and.
Yeah, they're willing to go after those grants, so.
But the owners want it to, I mean, they want it to be in this too, so, I mean, that's always, that's always plus, so, yeah. So consensus of the board to move forward and find out the costs of the upfront costs to see if we can.
I think so, yeah.
Pursue that? Okay.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so, we're just, we're just gonna look for, you know, consider, consider the costs and, but that's what we'll need to break down, but we should anticipate some costs on it to look into appraisal. Yeah, that was a, anything else in the NRM that we ought to look at, I have.
That's all we had, that was that special meeting.
Oh, yeah, that was.
There wasn't.
Okay. I had a couple of other meetings with John, we had sheriffs, one, one thing that I, that I brought to sheriff's committee was a request from Lakes Crisis Center, they have requested some of the sheriff's money for some of their support because they did not get included in, and I think I forwarded you the letter from Anna Celine, they didn't get funding from the legislations and they're in need. The other thing we kind of discussed was the opportunity for body cams and jailers now, we're looking at that and there was, was there some funding opportunities for, to start us on that? So another meeting I went to was MRC, annual meeting, we discussed some of our, some of our priorities along with, you know, an AMC, we try to, we share AMCs, but we also have some specific ones. Ditch, ditch, ditches was one of them and I can't remember, pretty much the same old ones that we always, you know, always are. They had a speaker there right away that was talking about the need to. They had a, a speaker there, um, right away that was talking about the need to, um, to change the trespass laws. And he's from, he was from southern Minnesota, but they have a lot of trespass laws, um, that are, seem outdated. Um, if you're, especially for hunting, was what he was kinda getting at. But if you're, if you don't have it properly posted, um, and to have it properly posted, you have to post it annually and you have to have your names in specific three-inch block lettering. And you have to have it, you know, each sign has to be visible from each one, I mean, um, so it's very, it's very cumbersome to, to have your rural vacant land posted. Or, so if you, you have, they, anyway, there's been a lot of trouble in other areas, but, um, I do see that as potentially something coming up here that, um, might be an issue. But there was no decision on it, but it was something to make aware and I, I think trespass laws, it, I mean, you, you look at our adjoining states. You can't go on someone's land unless it's, unless you have permission. You don't need it posted. But here, if it's wooded or swamp land, you can go on that land and hunt that land if you, without permission. Ag land is different. You're not supposed to go on ag land, um, without permission, but.
You shouldn't go on anybody's land without permission, and we shouldn't have to post it. You know, really, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's what they wanted.
That's what we should have. It shouldn't have to go through all that, if it's not yours.
And I stated, I asked the question if, if it's just, if we, if you refined it mostly for firearm, you know, for hunting. And he said, no, down in his area, there's a lot of people that are out searching in the woods for mushrooms and other, and shed hunting.
Deer, antlers, all kinds of stuff.
That's becoming real popular.
Who want, you know, if you think you got a place to look for antlers and somebody's, your neighbor's already been through there, that, you know, and it just shouldn't be. We shouldn't. But I'd like to see that changed.
So, that's what he, and, and the, everyone was receptive to it, but we didn't have anything on, on the agenda for it, so we just listened to them at that time. Um, and I, I believe that's all I had. Any other reports, correspondence? No one?
Nope.
Okay, then, uh, next on our agenda is the Lakes, um, Country Service Cooperative. Anyone interested in being appointed?
Willie brought that up to you because there's an expiration date there. We, you had received this at previous board meeting.
Yeah.
I, I am interested.
Okay, well, we will, um, we just need to support your nomination and, and if, if you are appointed, you will, will accept your, um, we, we will authorize per diem.
Yeah.
When you're accepted, so, um, we should probably have a motion then to.
It would be a good idea, Commissioner.
To, um, to support your appointment.
I'll make a motion to support Dave's appointment.
And if, if appointed, per diem's and.
And if appointed, per diem's.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. And we can, um, draft that letter.
Yeah.
Draft that letter with the appoint, with that support. And, and not just, we'll just draft a letter and, and Pat, you can maybe draft a letter.
We'll do. And I'll call Jeremy. He's the executive director. He, they request a resume too, so I'll ask him what he, what they want. I don't know if they want my entire resume.
Yeah, mine's getting pretty lengthy. Haven't filled it out for a couple of years though. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, good luck with your appointment.
I have an appointment, another appointment to the RAC Committee, Recreation Advisory Committee, uh, from District Two. Um, I'd like to appoint Jim Granger as the representative from District Two to the committee because of the position it does. The position is vacant, vacant currently, so we need to fill it, so.
Okay, we have a motion.
Yep.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, any other appointments? Not? Pat?
Well, I could certainly do that. Do you want me to go write a report and then go to Wannigan, or how would you like to do it?
We could just, we'll go to Wannigan Park right away. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. Um, I'm Karen Pfeifer and I'm gonna be presenting today with Hank, um, which all of you know about Wannigan Park. Um, just a, a little bit about me. I'm from Frazee. I've lived there for 20 years. I love Frazee. Um, I recently opened in the last year and a half, creating community consulting, so I'm the owner of that company. We've got six staff. We work across central and west central Minnesota. But I'm involved in several projects, um, within Frazee and there's, it's up and coming. Uh, we're excited about all the things happening in the community, so we're gonna share a little bit about Wannigan Park today. Um, about a financial request that we have that would be a significant investment, um, into a regional asset, so. Hank, anything else before we get rolling?
Uh, no, you know, not, not really, you know, but I, the Toad Mountain is interesting. Fifty years ago this year, I was cutting on that mountain for what would, at that time was going to be, uh, the largest ski area in this part of Minnesota. And they were gonna build a railroad from Detroit Lakes to Toad Lake.
Huh.
And have ski trains out of Fargo. Never happened. Beautiful place.
But they did mention, they did mention, uh, the, the clearing of some, you know, of areas that were going to be ski runs, so.
Mm-hmm. Now, they, they, they had them cleared at one time. And they were looking at condos on the One Bay. A major operation. That was, uh, uh, Dial Anderson, Chuck Erickson.
Charlesy Boyer. I remember it well.
Yes.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's just like what we're looking at, you know, it's, it's another concept. It's another, uh, way to get people into the area. It's close to Chilton Park, which we're looking at possibly for horse activity also. There's a, it wouldn't be that far for a connection, about four miles. So, but let's go back to Wannigan.
So Peggy, who is gonna pull up our presentation today, we're gonna talk about, uh, what is our request and just an overview of where are we at today? Um, how much progress have we made? What does the funding look like? Um, and then what are we asking from you? So you can go to the next slide. Um, and I answered that link separately, so hopefully we can get it to pull up. Okay, yep, perfect. Um, we worked with Leighton Broadcasting to put together a really short video we would love to show you today. For those of you who maybe haven't been out there yet, um, it was really well done and it just highlights what does Wannigan Park look like today and some of the people behind it. Um, so you can go to the next slide. Uh, this just outlines the regional impact. Wannigan Park will be one of the only regional parks north of St. Cloud, um, in greater Minnesota. The regional impact, um, estimated by Minnesota Parks and Trails is almost four dollars and 50 cents for every dollar and 70 cents invested. And so just recognizing that this is a very significant economic development investment for Frazee and for our region. Um, so we're really excited about the increased retail traffic, tourism, sales, jobs, everything that this will bring. Next slide. Uh, the total estimated cost of all of the phases of development to develop the park, um, is about 10.7 million dollars. Um, that gets it from the, from the purchase to completion, and we're gonna show you the map of what's planned within that. And right now, we're working on phase one, which is the allocation and initial infrastructure development. So you can go to the next slide. Um, this is included, we'll make sure that you have a copy of this, but this outlines all of the costs associated with the development of the park. And this is phase one, are all the things that are in color. So you can see, um, this is the outline of the park. Most of phase one, like I mentioned, is infrastructure, so it's roads, trails, um, making sure that people have access to the park. Um, which is of course important so they can get there. And so when we look at this, um, you can see the little yellow circle, kind of in the lower left corner there, is where the main access is going to be. Um, there will be camping, both primitive and RV camping sites on that left side in those loops. Um, the northern part there on the top of the map where all those trails are, is where the North Country Trail will intersect. That is where more of the primitive camping will be. Um, and of course, within the park, this is where the, um, Heartland Trail will come from the south, um, and go to Highway 87. The North Country Trail comes from the north and goes down, um, throughout the park. Um, and then the State Water Trail, the Otter Tail River goes through there, so they all connect. So this will be a huge opportunity for camping and for sightseeing. Um, there'd be many oversights, canoe kayak launches, um, other opportunities within that park. Next slide. Um, this was developed by Partnership for Health. Um, we're working with them on how do we improve access through trails? Um, and applying for funding that way. We'll talk a little bit more about this. Um, currently, there is a safe route to school, which is the red line on the top left side of the map. That was developed quite a few years ago, um, to be able to get children from over in the Red Willow Heights area over to the school district. Um, and then the Heartland Trail is the red trail on the bottom that runs past the high school that was just invested in. What we're working with them on and proposing funding for is the blue, um, which would connect both the safe route to school and the Heartland Trail and Wannigan Park. So you'd have access from a crossover by Highway 29 down to 87. And it would be, um, just a really great intersection across there. And then people would be meeting right at, um, just south of the main entrance. There would be a trail connector at Wannigan Park on that northeast side where the blue corner is. Okay, next slide. So where are we at with funding? Um, right now, we've allocated about 1.1 million dollars, um, that has funded the land allocation through the state of Minnesota. So it's currently owned by FCDC, will be, um, taken over by the city of Frazee any day. Literally. Um, that has paid for part of the North Country Trail, um, the border planting, that's gonna be some of the trees along, uh, the northwest edge. Um, and then also $350,000 in private fundraising. That has paid for working with Woodseth, um, on the park design, um, many of the other things. And then also is, um, still currently allocated in cash and pledges. Uh, we also have 3.1, almost 3.1 million dollars in pending and planned requests. Uh, we did submit an application for the relief application for the DNR. That was a $500,000 application approximately. Uh, we have a state of Minnesota bonding request that was, um, put forward for 1.85. And that would be for infrastructure for that trail that we shared. It would actually develop the road. So it would extend sewer and water over to the park, which would be really important for the camping, um, and access. And then we're working on a $350,000 application for the Great Outdoors Recreation Fund. Um, 400,000 through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails. And then we, um, currently have been in meetings looking at the Active Transportation and Transportation Alternatives Program grants. Both of those have a letter intent due this fall. Um, each of them requires matching funding. And we currently have approximately $100,000 in cash that can be used as a match for this. Um, they would be a significant, um, request for the TAP dollars and transportation alternatives. So, next slide. So really what we're looking at is, um, as we're requesting, you said, about 3 million dollars, um, that we're, we're working through and requesting. We have about 100,000 in matching cash. What we would love to see is the county be able to invest in this regional asset. Um, we're asking for 150,000. That could be pledged over several years. It, it could be done at once, but, um. And really, the use of that funding would be used for this infrastructure. Um, we need matching funds to, um, complete the TAP and TA grant applications that we mentioned that are really about that infrastructure. Um, that's critical to get done so people can get to the park. And, um, the total cost of just the road access and trails is about 1.73 million. So 150,000 is a very small portion of what we would be asking towards that total allocation. What did I miss, Hank?
I don't think you've missed anything.
Okay, you can go to the next slide. Um, and then really, this is, it's a one-time allocation. Um, the city of Frazee would ensure that those roads and, uh, trails are maintained after they are built and the infrastructure is there. They would be responsible for that, um, so that would not be something that we would be asking the county for. And, next slide. And before we go to any questions, do you wanna pull up that video quick?
Brad's gonna blow me picture.
Nature is more than a pretty picture. It's more than something to just observe. It's a place of connection with the land, the water, with wildlife, and with each other. It's a place where kids of all ages can blossom with knowledge, explore, slow down, and breathe. This is Wannigan Park now, and what it will be is where you come in. Your support can help us protect this critical Minnesota ecosystem of prairie, forest, and river. And preserve it and the health of our community for future generations. The vision for a place where people can gather and enjoy nature in central Minnesota started around 15 years ago. Thanks to the time, energy, and perseverance from many. And here we are. Legislators, Native American culture leaders, and community members are helping to make our dream a reality. Our small town has passionate and dedicated people working together to provide a better future for our community and our economy. This sacred and scenic place is worth protecting and sharing. Trails, camping, and amenities are within our sight. With your generous support, we are one step closer to achieving this vision. Join us.
Yeah, so that's a, just a short promotional video that Leighton Broadcasting did for us. We're very appreciative. And, um, yeah, so with that, I guess what questions, comments do you have for us?
Um, you know, just looking at that, it crossed my mind that, you know, our sales tax, that we call the SMART tax, kind of a dumb acronym for it, in my opinion. But, um, that's for the sales tax that goes towards our road, trails and roads. Would probably, um, when you, we talk about sales tax and, and, because we put that in because so many people, we have such a high tourism area. And this is, this would actually, it kinda identifies a tourism activity. So if we did look at that, I, I, yeah, I think the, that would be a funding source over, you know, over time that, um, we could, we could look into it for this. I, I'd rather do it that way, but I was, my question then was, is would that qualify, would those funds qualify for your matching grant, being it's?
Um, that's a great question. I think I would have to reach out to them and ask. I think so. I think if we had projections of what you think that would be and we could demonstrate that and have a letter of support, I think it would. But I would have to reach out and ask to make sure.
I mean, your request is reasonable, um, but I do, I mean, our, our funds in natural resources aren't that, I mean, we, we have funds, but that would, that would put a big, big dent in and, and.
Sure.
Um, but I think in, in this case, maybe, you know, it would, it would take our public hearing that we have annually, so it would be not something that real quick, but, um, John, you wanna?
I guess I've been involved from the kickoff of the park and all along, I said, if, hopefully the county can help out financially with down the road. And I like Karen, your idea, well, you could spread this out over a few years and still come up with that amount. And I'm still for that, you know, helping out. It's, it's quite a, some of these Denise and people and Hank have done a lot of work. Behind the scenes, meeting with people, a lot of, lot of involvement.
Years.
It has been, it's been, but the Heartland Trail, you know. But I think if we can do it that way, it'd be a great, you can budget it in and have the.
I mean, our, our sales tax revenue has went up considerably every year, so I mean, I mean, I think that's a, that, I, to me, that sounds like such a natural fit. But with that, we have to have the public hearings, you know, make, you know, because when we said this, this would, this is a road to prove.
It's a yearly.
It's a, it's an annual review of what projects and these trails are not part of it as of now. We'd have to, we'd have to change that and use that, or say that in the public hearing and then identify those. Pat, did I correct that?
Yeah, I think you're right on the ball. I think you'd have to have, first, you have to be eligible for the state statutes. These are sales tax dollars, but we call them SMART funds here. The resolution is exactly the approach you should use. Get it on the books that way. I will tell you that the state has been much more flexible in the last few years in how to use these SMART funds, as you call it, or local opt, sales tax. The other alternative, I'll just put that out to you, is recall you have LATCF dollars. That's about a hundred and sixty or seventy thousand dollars of funds that you received in a two-year period. That is also, the only thing you can't use that for was lobbying. But you could use it for, for other things. So there is another source there, too.
Don, how do you think we should proceed to go through highway and see if...
Yeah, but I think we could still, in consensus, that we're going to commit.
Yeah, I would agree.
A hundred and fifty. So you can go forward on planning.
Wonderful.
And help these matching grounds and so forth. And we can work on how we come up with it.
Well, and I, I would like to, I mean, I would like to keep, give us some flexibility. I mean, Bing says this was just brought to us today. I don't want to commit, I don't want to commit to funding that today. I am favorable to it, but I mean, I need to, I need to work through some, to see the timeframe or where it would fit in with that. I mean, I think we could fit it in over time that, through our highway. But I don't, I'm not going to commit to supporting the funds today. But I certainly am favorable to exploring how to get those funds.
Wonderful. So as far as the next step, how do we follow up with you on pursuing that?
Do you want to take it to highway and see more, and then...
Yeah, we can put it on their highway community agenda and...
Seeing if that is a funding source that we can look at for maybe...
Packing, checking the...
Three years or...
Statute part of it.
Commissioner Nelson, could I just ask, thank you. Could I just ask the, the visitors here? When, when, when do you have to lock in the request or when do you need the dollars by, what's the date?
So the, the letter of interest, we have to submit by early November. But the grants actually aren't due, I believe, one of them is due in the spring and the other one is due in like June. So they're, they're phased out a little bit, so there's lots of time.
But do we, do you have to have our commitment to have the letter sent in November?
The only thing we need from the county that we would like your blessing on is because Frazee is not a financial state-eligible community. We would need a letter of support from Becker County to be a fiscal host basically for that application. And so I think it was identified that we would need to talk to Jim Olson. So as long as he would support us working with him. We didn't, we don't need a commitment from you yet on as far as any match. We just need to send a letter of intent and would like your blessing that you'd be willing to support us in trying to go after some funding.
Basically, the fiscal host.
Yeah.
Mary, you don't have any issues, do you? Bing's auditor.
Commissioner Nelson, I just remind the board, we've been a fiscal host on a few grants, including the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant. So we're not new to that.
Yep.
Perfect. Do we need a motion for that?
A letter of support and be the fiscal host, probably.
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion to be the fiscal host of your, of the project. And do you have anything specific on what, how that's termed?
There is a Transportation Alternatives Grant and then an Active Transportation Grant, so...
For those two grants?
Those two.
Is that acceptable to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, for those two grants coming up? And letter, and a letter of support that was included in to do that, okay?
Perfect.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we'll, we'll do some homework and seeing if we, what the board wants to do as far as... I, I think the, from, from my opinion, I think that that, that the sales tax would be the best place for us to go. But again, that might take some time because we have to go through the public hearing. Is that the, when is it? December, so that would be eligible for next year.
That would work well.
Perfect.
And it would probably, you know, we want to hear from the public if they think that's, I mean, it's, if it's spread over three years, it would be, you know, not... Mary, what's the, what's the latest on our sales tax revenue increasing still? Yeah. And when we started that, we anticipated, what, one point two million? And we're up to three million. So we, we're getting a lot of projects done. Expenses have increased, but I think we can certainly look at that, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Well, thank you. And that's not, you're not in my neck of the woods, but I appreciate what you do for your community. It's a, it's a great, great thing. And Hank, is this your first year in Frazee?
Yeah.
Just, just, you know, these small communities are just, you know, this is what makes communities great. The Legion in Lake Park has a, has a tentative opening date, October twenty-eighth. They've completed that whole, it's a brand-new building. And I haven't been inside, but it, it looks amazing outside. Can't wait to get in there and start, start our community back. Their fundraising has just been tremendous. They had to do some fundraising because their insurance didn't cover the cost of the whole repair. And I think they had an individual even donate a hundred thousand. I mean, but the donations and the, and the community spirit in these small towns is just amazing, so.
Yeah, I just have to give Karen a shout-out also for the Cornerstone. They just did a telethon, telethon, right, on Friday?
Yep.
And raised almost a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I heard that on the radio.
So pretty fantastic.
Our gala is coming up on the twenty-eighth. And if you would like to be scared in Frazee, we have our haunted forest this Friday and Saturday as well, so.
For Corner, for, for Cornerstone?
Both for Cornerstone, yeah.
Where is that located?
The Cornerstone Community and Youth Center in Frazee, or the Haunted Forest. So it's in Hank Lugkey Park, where the sledding hill is. It's going to start there and then it goes through. It's about a half a mile to three-quarter of a mile walk down past the river, back through the woods on some of our property over there. So it's going to be a frighteningly good time.
And the hours are?
Oh, gosh, good question. I think it's seven PM till eleven PM. I'd have to double check.
It's Friday and Saturday.
Yeah, Friday and Saturday, yep. And then the fundraising gala is the following Saturday, the twenty-eighth, from five thirty till eight thirty. That's performance silent auction, live auction, and lots of kid entertainment, so.
And where do you get tickets for that?
At the event center. You can find tickets at the Chamber of Commerce or at Cornerstone or on Eventbrite, so.
Hank, you're going to scare people at the...
He's at the gate.
I usually scare them when I walk into the council, the city council room.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Pat?
Just a few items. The, last week, we had the Minnesota Association County Administrator and Minnesota Association of County Human Resource Manager event, fifth and sixth. Well-attended, I think sixty of the eighty-seven counties were there. Some of the speakers that we, I think, got a little bit more information out of. John Villarreal was with the Commissioner of Minnesota Bureau of Mediation Services to talk about changes in mediation services, arbitration services. We had a speaker that came in to talk about changes in the legislative session, how it's affecting county employment. Speaker talking about a new county salary survey that AMC, Association of Minnesota Counties, is putting together. And then actually, someone at the state-level Bureau of Criminal Apprehension came in and talked about the role that they're playing in criminal intelligence analysis across the state of Minnesota. And then finally, a couple of attorneys that we certainly have experience with talked about cannabis restrictions in the workplace and the community, how it affects the workplace. So we, that was also well-received by administrators.
You mean, they gave samples?
They did not do that, yeah, although it's probably legal. But I, I think, I think the big issue that came, came out of that was, you know, what's considered, you know, public land, you know, where, and what does it mean if someone is able to smoke cannabis? And how does, when is it, when does it cross the line when they're in the workplace? And so those are very challenging issues and, and law enforcement issues as well. So, but well-attended. And I was just, I was going to remind the board that the annual township is this Thursday in the evening. I know it's been posted for a while, but just make sure you're aware of that. We have set up most of our bargaining units with meetings. We're doing teams meetings initially. We've got a few more to schedule, but we're in process with that. The, and, and I think one of the biggest challenges we have, of course, is, you know, and just kind of coordinating those meetings. And we thought a teams meeting in the beginning, since many of their business agents are much further away. It was the first step in our negotiation, so. The rest, I'm going to just go through the list if I might, Commissioner. First one is budget twenty-two-four. We always put on page thirty-one the, the table timeline there and where we're at. We're at the committee review process. Sheriff Committee reviewed, a deputy position, which we'll bring to you today. We're interested in through committee reviewing the Assistant Attorney request at, at an upcoming committee. Some of the things that aren't in the budget that I think you should be aware of is, you know, we got a late request with the food pantry. They are looking for thirteen thousand dollars in operating costs each year and requesting the county consider that. They've made the same request that the city of Detroit Lakes, Detroit Lakes did approve that. So that's, that's not in the budget right now, but it's something that we're strategizing to put into the budget and how we would fund that with our current levy structure. There's an ECPN grant that we'll be receiving from Sunnyside. We get that each year. Last year, it was fifteen thousand dollar request. It does appear in talking to the executive directors, they'll be making less of a request, but we have budgeted fifteen thousand, so we'll have somebody freed up for some other initiatives. And then we, the museum has had some additional requests with regards to insurance. And again, we're still waiting on a response for MCIT. Some of the external agencies like Soil and Water, we have a meeting with them. They're a different government unit, but we'd like to go a little bit more in-depth on their budget as well. And so we've scheduled a meeting with them. So everything is, again, on schedule with budgets. We've incorporated the elected salaries in there as best that we know them. Of course, the board still has to approve them. And then, of course, you know, wages will be up in the air until the board gives some direction on that. But, but as far as budgets, we're on a, we're on a good schedule so far. And then moving on, on page thirty-one is AMC sent this to us. You probably, this probably reminds you of something you approved during our business meeting. It's a list of the AMC delegates. U.S. Commissioners are automatic delegates. And you approved these five to be delegates and so they could vote in addition to the commissioners on legislative items at the conference. They sent this to us, just reminding us we could add another three. And so if we wanted to do that, we would have to send that to them by November first. My plan was to send an email out to the other department heads that aren't listed on here. But I thought before I did that, I would get some direction from the board. You did approve this earlier this year with, with these individuals and this number here. So I'm interested in knowing if you'd like to add for delegates six, seven, and eight, if you'd like us to reach out to department heads.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to. I think if they're, I mean, if their organization has meetings that, that mirror the time, they'll be, if they're there, I don't... The delegations, not the, voting members aren't that important. I mean, usually not anything they count anyway. I mean, that's usually nothing, nothing that's ever counted. Once in a blue moon, but it doesn't really matter. I don't anticipate too many people going to AMC unless their professional organization is there also. Like the engineers is usually there.
They're there all the time.
I think the administrators are usually there, maybe, but I don't know. Is, is human services at the same time? Do you have an association meeting?
There's quite a few of the human service directors there.
It doesn't preclude anyone from attending anyway if they, the county sees...
See that, especially when their organizations are meeting down there together.
There's some that are real active. Some, some individuals are active and choose that, I don't know. If we have someone that's what, passionate, then they certainly can go and... We haven't heard from any delegate, anyone wishing to be a delegate, though, I don't...
Sure, I, I was going to, I didn't want to overstep, so that's why I'm bringing it to you now. We'll have a department head meeting at the end of the week. But one thing I'd like to pass on to department heads, because as I've met with them, there's been no board direction not to go, but there just hasn't been a really direction to go. And so I think many department heads don't go. But it sounds like I could tell them that the board would be certainly open and to them going to their departmental meeting for their industry, their human services, going to the Human Service Committee and head down there for them.
Yeah, I think they're, a lot of times, they're not, I mean, they have different times. I know, like Auditor Treasures, I know they've had their different meeting times a lot of times than coordinating with AMC.
Okay.
Auditor Treasures, they ever have a vote?
Well, there's Mako, right, Minnesota?
We don't usually welcome them.
Well, good, I will let them know that. And then just continuing on, I, I just added on the Legislative Platform. This was, came out also, the conference I was at, what's going to be heading to the, to the District Four Conference. So I thought I would just put that on record so you guys could take a look at that. The agenda's in there as well for the District Four Conference that begins at eight AM on Friday, October twentieth. There's a, they always ask special questions. I thought I would include that on page thirty-eight. What I do is do my best to try to complete that early on and then send it off to those that are going to attend just to see what the answers are, make sure that we aren't missing something.
I think they're pretty basic ones.
Pretty basic questions, yeah, but just wanted you to see those. The next item, County Newsletter. I just wanted you to just see, just a newsletter. I just said select, I've got, I've got experience with this, I used to work there. But I just want to do, to let you know, is we've in the past, here at the county, done sort of an in-person newsletter just for the employees, but nothing that extends out to constituents and things like that. And as we get to a county-based plan, I think one of the questions or discussion topics that we'll have is how are our citizens getting their information? Are there gaps in getting information? Ways of being informed, either social media and things like that? And I just wanted to put in this for you just as information only. But I'd, I'd like to see thoughts of the board on whether you think there is value to talk about that during our community-based planning process. We certainly are going to be talking about social media and things like that. But is there value in creating a newsletter that where department heads on a quarterly basis are kind of letting the public know what they do and what they are doing? And, and I'm just interested in getting some feedback on that and what are your thoughts?
I don't, I think it's a good idea to have a second or third way of getting information. We don't always get the right information. We don't always hear everybody's side of the story. And I, I think it's, it's a very good idea.
Would, would it be predominantly digital, like shared on website?
It would be, thank you, Commissioner Meyer, it would be. We're not interested in printing things out. And by the way, we're not interested in this being a newspaper. I mean, what it is, is it's a direct quarterly ability for department heads to say, well, here's a grant I've written on behalf of the county or we're exploring, you know, you know, a certain initiative and kind of expanding on things. But we would want it to be digital, have a QR code where people could hit that QR code and just automatically get emailed to them on a quarterly basis. But like I said, it's, we don't know what the needs are for our citizens. And I think the community-based plan will flesh that out. So we could certainly wait till that time, but I thought I would at least bring it up as an idea.
I kind of see it as a little bit a hybrid. We have our, we have a really good webpage now, if we could just have a link to it. I just see a lot of these articles are just kind of, just your general information. I think updates would be a nice, nice touch to it. But I don't want to put too much on, I mean, for me, writing an article takes me a lot of work. I mean, because to write a, to write a good article, it takes a lot of time. Probably has to, I mean, and for me, it takes, I mean, it takes a significant amount of input and time to put that together. So I, I think just putting their highlights or some new projects, some grant opportunities are, I think those are good things. But if you want everyone to just write a, write an article every, you know, four times a year, I think that, I, I just not there yet, but...
I think it would be good to get input from the department heads because they really will be the ones that will be putting it together, just to see.
And that actually will take place at our next department head meeting. I was really just thinking, you know, from a citizen's standpoint, just learning how they're getting their information and are there gaps? Maybe there isn't. And we may find this to be, as Commissioner Nelson said, maybe, maybe redundant or maybe not necessary. But, but again, I was just interested in your thoughts.
No, I, I think it's kind of a good idea, you know, have a department head that wants to expand on something right a little bit more in-depth if you can.
I mean, we've, we've done a lot, you know, here's three simple recycling rules. Well, we send a lot of information... Well, we send a lot of information in our, in our, um, property tax statements and wide-ranging benefits of trees and, um, you know, they're just, some of them are just not, I mean, they're, they're good articles, but to have, I mean, I just don't wanna tax our department heads with, with trying to come up with something that's, I mean, if they wanna cut and paste something, you know, that's a lot easier than, you know, reminders on recycling. We don't have to invent the wheel on all this stuff. It's just, um, but.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the feedback. And like I said, we'll, uh, we'll certainly have a, a discussion with department heads and get some feedback from them. So thank you for that. Uh, moving on, the, the class and comp study.
You did touch base with District Four.
Did I, did, um, I, I think I did, and, uh.
The meeting date. You talked about the AMC annual meeting, but the meeting date's this coming Friday, so.
Yep. The agenda's in there, yep. I'm sorry, I thought I mentioned that, so, uh.
No, I just making sure, John, too, can't make it? You mentioned the question, so.
I'll be there.
I'll, I'll be there, too.
So three of you.
And, and Otter Tail, and I anticipate being there.
Okay. Good. Thank you. A class and comp study, uh, we, I wanted to start and just to review some items relating to our current ban and grade system. We talked about a little bit at Finance Committee, and, and we reached out to Robert Bjorkland, actually had a, a conference call with him, the HR Director and Human HR Generalist was involved in the, in that teams meeting. And we wanted to ask some questions of him, um, on what, uh, role he could play in the system and whether the current, um, ban and grade system might have some value in giving some options or some alternatives to the board. And his work with the ban and grade system goes back to the mid-eighties at Becker County. Uh, I think he talked about working with, um, a coordinator there at the time who was also the Veteran Service Officer on beginning that, uh, ban and grade system. It transitioned to our HR Director, our long-term HR Director, and he played more of a consulting role, uh, in it. And, um, if, if you recall, we had a process where we had a number of people on staff or in a committee, and two commissioners were there and, um, and they would make a recommendation, and then the ban and grade consultant would review it and would go to the board. Um, those are very long meetings, um, especially just for one application. But we transitioned it, made it a little bit more efficient, just had the ban and grade consultant and the commissioners and the HR Director involved. But, but his, his response was, um, very categorically is, um, um, he, he does not believe in his professional opinion is using this existing structure, this ban and grade structure for your needs moving forward would be appropriate. And the rea, and his, his reasons were, um, uh, is the nuances that are built in a ban and grade system really create a lot of issues from his perspective. Um, the, a, a class and comp system that has a point system in place, a classification point system, as what's being proposed here for the future, is the role that you should play. He has indicated for a number of years, and he said decades, these, he, he said the system that we currently have just, is just out of date and hasn't been updated. And, um, so he, he doesn't believe, in his opinion, that we should consider that as, um, as an opportunity. Although he is encouraged about the idea of, that you guys are looking at a classifications with the points. He said that is, in his mind, really the future. It eliminates these nuances that he speaks of, um, in having, um, confusion about kind of the workload and what people do. But, um, it was deserving of, of the discussion, and we had that meeting, and, um, I don't think I missed anything, but I know, uh, Carrie is here. Carrie, you wanna come up, please? And, uh, but, but that, that's the answer they got from Mr. Bjorkland.
And who was on that call?
Uh, it was myself, Carrie, and Amanda Pockel, and of course, Mr. Bjorkland. Did I miss anything, Carrie, on that?
Um, no, I don't think so. It was a pretty direct conversation.
He was able to, um, he would, would it be able to look at the class and comp study and, and assign it through our, through his relationship then? Would he be able to look at that and continue employment?
Um, not through the current system that we're on.
Would he, looking at the information we got with the class and comp study, would he be able to modify the, our syst, current system?
No.
He couldn't change, change, and he, he's not willing to work with us on?
No, he would be willing to work, but he is not doing any current work with the current ban and grade. He's also working through a, like a point system similar to what we're doing.
But he has a point system.
He does. So really what we would be doing, if that's the direction the board chooses to go, is we would be starting again and reevaluating.
Transition to his point system, or looking at his point system.
Reevaluating jobs and starting again from scratch.
Well, I don't think we have to start from scratch, being the employees have already done all their job descriptions.
I'm just relaying what, what he told us, and it, you know, one system transitioning point system to another, perhaps some of the information, but he was, he was pretty clear that what we've collected thus far isn't gonna translate into this current system. Again, you'd be starting again from the beginning.
But I think we do, uh, wanted to bring some other options to you. We did have some discussion with the current consultant. If you were to end, um, the, the, not have him proceed with additional services, like the next step, if the wage table would be approved, would be the job description update. We did speak to him about that. That could get assigned to another staff person within that David Brown organization. Um, it also could be put on someone else to complete. Uh, and there would be a cost savings to that because they haven't started it yet, and so they have charges for it. So there, uh, so there is an option if the board wanted to, um, change the services and what's being implemented per the current proposal. You do have some options there? What was the savings on that, or what would the reduction, do you recall?
Um, I believe it was, you know, right around twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars, yeah.
That's how much it would cost, or that's how much it would save?
That's how much you would save, and they would not charge you, cause they wouldn't be doing those services?
Yeah, and, and roughly.
Eight?
Excuse me?
They'd charge about eight, then?
Eight, eight thousand, eight thousand?
Yeah.
Um, it's roughly about twenty thousand. We're about sixty thousand dollars into the contract currently.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, with the work that's been done at this far that we owe. Yep.
The total project was about eighty-three thousand?
Right, right.
Okay. And so the, the board could choose to have a different personnel within that organization to do it, or if you want to separate that, um, with the company, you could, we could bring someone else on to do job descriptions, attempt to do them internally? I mean, there are some options that certainly the board could give us some direction on.
I don't, I don't know that I'm at a point to, yet to throw the, what we have out the window and not, and start over or not follow through that. I just think that there are still issues that I have with it that haven't been addressed, and that, that's what I would like to see addressed before I would consider approving it.
Would the job descriptions correct some of the, some of the, um, I don't know what the word would be, but some of the, some of the, would it correct maybe some of the mistakes that were, some of the employees should land? I mean, would it, cause I don't think the employees put a lot of time into the PAQs and, and they put a lot of time into the job descriptions. Could that, could that change where they land on some of these things? Cause I, I don't feel like we can move forward, or I can't move forward with the system that we have so many concerns with, and we hope to, we hope to correct them in the appeals process. I mean, if we think that there are issues and we hope to change them, then I think it should be done before we implement it and.
I would agree.
So I think your question is, um, the time spent with the, with the job descriptions and whether or not that would change where people fell on the scale. Is that what I'm hearing, the question? Um, it, it's not going to change. Again, um, if you recall, the jet packs that were done, and had there been any questions about those essential duties, those would have been asked, or we could have, you know?
Been answered.
Yes, they would have been answered.
By whom?
Um, by myself and/or I would have relayed that to Mark Goldberg. And, you know, there's really through this process, there's that part of it where the employees were, put that information in, and they went through the process, but then they were also compared up against the market. So you really have a checks and balances throughout this. And I, and I know that there are some concerns that, you know, different people have with different positions, and I think that they are, we've talked about through some of those. And, you know, again, there's going to be a process, but again, because of your views of some of those positions, again, keep in mind, we're on a different system, are moving into a different system.
What do you mean by because of our views of the?
Well, I think, I think there's been some questions about specific positions and where they were graded and how they compare to others. That's what I meant.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, when you look at how many positions there are in the county, a hundred, what was it, a hundred and four?
Hundred and two.
Hundred and two. You know, we're talking about a handful, and I understand that the concerns, but again, I don't think any system is absolutely perfect. That's what I would say. And I think the old ban and grade probably wasn't perfect either.
Going back to the ban and grades, the old or young, that was, I was involved in early eighties.
Mm-hmm.
And it is the same thing there. There is a lot of employees, more than there is now, that were upset where they ended up. And through appeals and so forth, some of those probably got elevated more than they should have been. And.
That's what we were told.
The whole thing. And now we got, I don't know how many employees, I've talked to a few, and they're not completely happy with it, but it's livable. Uh, we got ten, twelve, out of three hundred and some?
People.
And my concern is, we all agreed to go forward with this wage and comp study and spend up to eighty-some thousand. And we've already spent sixty. So we're gonna start over and we're gonna spend another sixty to eighty. The old system, I don't think can be fixed. You can, you're just gonna, uh, you're not, just to skew it more.
What, what's, so what, we spent sixty thousand, what's the next step? Is that putting the job descriptions in?
Correct.
And then that cost the other twenty-three or?
Right, that was in the original proposal. And there's been work internally done on that, and then just again, to try to streamline everything, as you maybe have seen some of the job descriptions, there's not, you know, there's not a lot of all the information that we wanted to capture on those, to keep those updated, et cetera.
No matter how you look at it, this new system is way better than what we had. I was on that ban and grade, and that is no good. And we do have, we can look at this, we're not done with it. If we accept it, we can look at it. Nobody says we have to stay with it if we absolutely can't live with it, but to find it, to actually have the perfect system right now where everybody's happy is almost.
I don't thi, I don't think I'm looking for a perfect system, or, or I'm looking to make everybody happy, cause I would agree that that's not ever gonna happen. What I don't understand is why, why we have to approve it and then fix it? Why can't we fix it and then approve it? Re-look at the positions that, you know, I, I'm gonna go back to our social services supervisors. You know, we have them all at the same grade, and their education requirements are different. I don't believe we should have them at the same, same grade. I'd, I'm, I'm quite concerned with, um, with your position, Carrie, and that, that grade level. I don't, I don't think, not that I don't respect and appreciate what you do, I just am not sure that that's an appropriate, um, grade, because in our conversation with Mark, he had said that he looked at Assistant County Commissioner wages. We don't have an Assistant County Commissioner, or County Administrator, sorry.
But he did say it was just a couple points difference. Do you?
No, not on that.
It, it was very small.
He said it was small, but, but, but I, I'm still, that never should have happened.
Yes, conversation is, you could take that off her job title, and it wouldn't affect where she's at.
That's what he said.
And so, so.
Well, it's the duties that, that make your job description. So what duties bumped you, bumped up that position to that, to that title?
And those duties were, I, I shared that with the, with the board per your request. The jet pack was provided to all of you, what the essential duties were.
So you can, I mean, if you wanna modify a job description, we did, done that in the past, you can modify the, the duties of that job, and, and then that would significantly change, alter the.
It would.
The scale. But if, if.
If I, if I may, just.
But if this, if he's just looking at all, I mean, in your case, let's use your case for example.
Sure.
Um, so you look at another dozen assistant administrator, or assistants, or HR directors, I mean, and you look at them, and they all have these duties, so you're gonna be wa, you're gonna be thrown in that same group of people that the duties aren't the same. So you're gonna, um, get a higher salary because the, the overall group gets, is kind of responsible for administrative assistant as the HR person. So if you're, if those aren't your duties, then you're still thrown in that pool, then there's something wrong with that?
With, with the jet packs, just in general, the duties, the essential duties have to match the matches that they, the comparables, if you will, by eighty percent. So what I'm currently doing and what I'm cash, that's what it was really lined up against. And again, titles are one thing, but it's really about the HR duties.
Right, but if your duties, if those twenty percent of those duties aren't in your job description and you're getting credit for them, it bumps you up to a higher pay grade of the, of the, of the masses, of the mass of that group. If that, if eighty percent of those job duties you're doing, which most HR administrators are, you're all doing the same roles, but if you have, um, half of those, half those individuals are the assistant administrator, and that bumps them way up in their, in their pay, if their duties are that different. If eighty percent of the duties are the same, but like in the ban and grade, if, if you have one, if you have one cla, you know, duty that bumps you up, then your whole job description is that. So that would be just like the, this new system. If any one of those people have administrative assistant, they're gonna be bumped up into that pay scale. So now eighty percent of your pay is, is general HR duties, but you're comparing it to people that are bumped into higher range because they have assistant administrative duties. So I, eighty percent matches, but when you bump up one thing in that, in those other groups, they're bump up to the next tier.
Well, he, he didn't make it sound like that. He made it sound like it was very close, and that, I, I remember that clearly. But you gotta remember, she's not the assistant. We didn't make her that yet. This is just if we do. So you don't.
No, it's not.
Well, she's not the assistant right now. It's if we, if, it's if we do make her the assistant.
No, it's not.
No, it, it.
The job, the pay does not change.
And if I might, Commissioner Nelson, the, the duties that are in the PAQs that were submitted by Carrie are human resources responsibilities. There's nothing in there about administration. You could, you could name her title Mickey Mouse, her, she's gonna have the same grade because the job description is human resources, there's no administration in there. So the, it's what's in the content of the PAQs, not what the title is. I would say one thing to go back to Mr. Bjorkland, and again, I just, you know, I just felt important to say this, is he has indicated in the ban and grade system, there are a number of positions, a lot of positions, that are grossly inflated in the current ban and grade system for this county. So again, no system is perfect, but at the end, um.
What, can I, can I, what do you mean grossly inflated?
Meaning they're, the, the salaries are higher than he feels they should be. Now, that's been going on for thirty years. I mean, I could.
Well, well, in the new study, we didn't see anyone that was grossly inflated.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just telling you where, what we're trying to leave and where we're trying to get to.
So where do those fall into the new salary, those grossly inflated ones?
Yeah, well, I mean, he's gonna have to give us a list, but I mean, this was just one call that we had with him.
So then, according to him, our new scale is aired already? Because there's nobody grossly inflated in our new, in our new system.
We're using PAQs in a new table with, with comparables that, again, this ban and grade system is using this. Ban and grade system hasn't been updated for thirty or forty years, has not been updated for thirty or forty years. Um, job descriptions have not been updated for thirty or forty years.
I think your statement of grossly over, overcompensated is.
His words, yeah.
Well, why would you state someone else's words if you can't back them up?
Well, we'll, we'll get the information for you.
There's someone that's grossly overpaid in this new system, which should be identified also.
That's, that's the reason that you're reviewing the wage table right now and approving it. These are two different systems, but I'm just telling you is, we're trying to leave for a better system, and, uh, and I think that's what we would do if the board were to support it. We would be leaving to a better system. We would be leaving to a better system. And there would be an appeals process. Again, that is something we need the board's direction on. What do you want the appeals process to be? That's another role you have to play there, too.
Is the, is the, what's this ongoing expense to, to go with this?
I, I don't have that in front of me.
I'm sorry, say that again, Commissioner.
What is the ongoing annual cost?
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, the ongoing, you have to keep in mind that with an existing table, every three to five years, we'd like to update the table, that would be an appropriate thing to do in any system. There's, if there are appeals, there's a role for, at least what's been proposed here, for this company to play in a third-party appeals process. If they're not doing, appeals aren't coming to them, they're not doing anything, there, there isn't any cost to it. And, I mean, those are the major things, am I missing anything on that, and with ongoing? But again, you as a board can, can deviate from that, you've got that ability as a board. You could say, well, maybe we'd like to do an appeals process a different way. And, so that's something that you'll have to take up if you would like to change that, or have a different individual, David Drowne, be involved in it.
Well, we're incurring some of the same expense yearly with Bjorkland, reviewing and.
For job descriptions, yeah, he charges us per, if there's requests to update or new positions.
We've had ongoing expenses, we started consulting with them, so.
This isn't a contract, then, that we'd sign with this firm to?
We did not sign a contract.
With Bjorkland, Commissioner Nelson?
With the new consultant.
Excuse me, okay.
David Drowne?
Yeah.
What was the 28.5 annually payment? What was that, 28,500?
Annually?
Yep.
Well, I, I don't have the proposal in front of me, I'm, yeah, we'll have to look at that. I'm assuming that's the estimate on what the appeals process is, and ongoing work with job descriptions, or new jobs that come into play, or out of a classification pay, there could be a whole host of things that you would be involved in, I would expect.
I think that, I think, the thing here that, it's, it's one thing for an employee to appeal their position, because they're not happy and they don't feel like they're, like, I, I, I agree, like, if we have an employee that doesn't agree with their position, then that would be for them to appeal after we approve. But when we have board members that are concerned with it, I think that needs to be fixed before it's approved, because why would I approve of something that I don't, that I see is not accurate? I think if you want us to approve it, we need to fix those things and then approve it. Like I said, I'm, I'm not ready to throw this out the window and, and not use it. I want these, you know, these things corrected, or give me more proof that they're accurate. I don't know, I just, I just think that there are a couple of things that I don't agree with. We did talk through the assistant county attorney one at our last board meeting, that it seems like that one we could, they're close enough to a 10, that, that could make it work, but I just, that, that's what I think. I think we need to fix it, and then let's come back to approve it.
What if they're, those positions you're talking about are reviewed again and no change, you're still gonna have the same amount of opinion, that it's not right?
Partly.
You know, once in a while, we gotta move forward things to correct it. Here, we've been sitting on this for months, and it's what the unions wanted in the negotiation. At that time, there, I even said that, you gotta, you know, you might get with something that you don't completely like. It happens all the time.
And we are running out of time. We actually are, we're, we're supposed to be doing negotiations and.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we can't, this, we agreed last time that it, it wouldn't necessarily hold up negotiations.
Well, you can't use it. So it's, it's, it's no good to go into negotiations and, and use a salary schedule that hasn't been approved by this board. So then you're referring back to the old antiquated one to move forward. So.
To, to your comment about it not being approved, the social services supervisors were sent over, my understanding, as one position. What my request is, is that they be sent over because they have different education requirements. My understanding is, it was sent over that way, again, with the understanding that the job descriptions were gonna be looked at with the PAQs, because the job descriptions say what the education requirements are, but the PAQs don't, because three of the, or two of the positions are four-year degree, no experience, but if you don't have experience, you don't need a degree, a degree. You can't look at that with, through a PAQ, maybe necessarily accurately, unless you're gonna say no education's required with this much experience. So I think that we, we need to look at those positions separately.
And if I may just share, we did have a meeting with two of the commissioners, and, and we did speak, or did speak about that particular issue, and I'm just gonna be very frank. If we are to look at those, those social service supervisors, some of them will drop a grade. I mean, that's where we're gonna go with this.
Yep.
I just wanna make that clear.
Mm-hmm.
But I believe I said that, I.
Yep.
Agreed to that.
And if they're dropping a grade, it's because we're overpaying them at the proposed level.
Well, they're in the grade, but again, keeping in mind where they get within the grade. I don't know that it's, at the end of the day, it's gonna make much of a difference on January, as far as what raise increase they'll see, because they'll be in a different grade.
Correct.
Yes. They'll be in a different grade.
Mm-hmm.
But I just wanna make everybody aware of that, that's really where this would go.
And we, this wouldn't be the first position that has dropped a grade.
That's correct.
How do you adjust the salaried positions that are getting so, so close to the individuals that are getting overtime? How do you adjust, how do you just highway where you have a salaried position that is near the same, and put more hours in than, than, and we can't give bonuses according to, we can't give?
Well, it's something we have to deal with, because we've got few salaried employees that, through emergencies and lack of staff, there's no other choice.
How do we deal with it?
Hire more people, or pay them, one or the other.
Well, this is what we're talking about, pay them. How do we adjust that salary to, to make it so they're not putting, getting less per hour than people below them?
We do have some positions that could go, I think you're speaking salary exempt versus hourly, and I think that during this process, we need to take a, a look at that. I think you have a couple of issues. I think you have, if you have salaried people that are putting in an extraordinary amount of hours, I think that's an issue, that perhaps is a staffing issue. And then if you have hourly employees, then you really need to take a look at, you know, who's approving that and how that's actually going forward. So I think there's a couple of issues.
Well, if the hourly employees don't go to work, we don't get our roads plowed.
And the sheriff, and a lot of the, a lot of the overtime in the sheriff's office is state and federal grants. That's how they get overtime.
Well, if I may, Commissioner Nelson, there's, there's like 14, I think I had 14 points when you evaluate a position, whether it's salary exempt or hourly, I think it's 14 points that you have to follow. In fact, actually, this was one of the things we, I think it was at our conference, and someone bring, bring that as a training opportunity. I think, you know, the one thing that we would like to make sure if someone is salaried is to appreciate and understand the hours they are putting in. And, because to your point, it may, it may mean, you know, are, are they being productive in their time? It could also mean that they, there does need to be more of an investment in staff. Because just because your salary doesn't mean you should be working 30 hours over a 40-hour work week, that's, that's self-defeating, isn't it, as an employee? So we need to make sure that time cards are documented in a way that we can measure that productivity, but at the same time, we do meet with, you know, department heads when we do run into those situations, and we look at staffing. And, but it's also, keep in mind, is our salaried people, it's, you know, a salaried person is, is paid more than their hourly rate, because the expectation is that they will be putting in some hours over a 40-hour work week. But defining what that is, is, can be a moving target, and sometimes it's weather-related, when we talk about plowing and things like that, and, but, you know, I, I think we've identified positions that definitely need to be salaried, that aren't yet, that we'll be bringing to you another time for your approval. But when, when individuals are going 30 hours beyond that, that, that tells me that, you know, there needs to be investment in staff.
Yeah, just past history, Barry brought up the highway superintendent, that was, at one time, during emergencies, was paid overtime. And since then, it's kinda went away, and the last couple winters, they worked 90 days straight. That includes the superintendent and all the rest. So there's a lot of extra overtime with the past two or three winters we've had, that they're just continuous, and that's 12, 14-hour days.
What's the difference between overtime and hiring somebody? What's more expensive?
We do analysis and compute whether it's got the return on investment we're looking for, but time and app is a lot of money.
Does that comp class study, does that allow to pay overtime to a salaried employee if he's for emergencies?
He recommended not.
Yeah, there are some counties that, again, salary-exempt positions are, I don't wanna say a cost savings, 'cause I don't know if that's the right word, but you're allowed to pay those individuals a salary. Now, some county, counties are going to more hourly staff versus salary by choice. I mean, you could certainly, nothing says you have to go salary-exempt, that's up to the county. If the reverse were, if you have somebody in a salary position that should be accumulating overtime, that's where the issue comes in.
That'd be, might be an issue, too, change the background hourly.
The superintendent job?
Yeah.
When, do you remember when it was switched over to salary and why? The reasoning was?
It's been quite a few years of salary, but they allowed emergency overtime.
And that would be more of a policy initiative.
Like weather, bad weather.
Mainly it's weather, weather-related, which could start in November and end in April.
Mm-hmm.
It's passed, went from severe 96, 97 snowstorms, right into a major flood in April, that we fought for months.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's mainly weather-related issues with that department.
So if we did hire somebody, we really wouldn't have any use for him during the summer?
Well, you always find.
You find something for him to do, but.
Well, there's always, you know, you have, we have temporary interns, I mean, there's, I don't think we need to get into the detailed discussions, whether the, you know, but, let's, let's put this on the agenda next meeting, and I think we should, if we can get.
We gotta move one way or another.
Any more questions answered and.
Soon as possible.
Well, Commissioner Nelson, just to offer this to the commissioners, certainly, because a couple commissioners asked, but if there are commissioners that would like to have a more one-on-one meeting with the consultant through Teams, obviously only two, we did this time, because we, we, because of open meeting issues, but if you, if you feel that would be helpful, he's available, and it can be via Teams, and to be able to talk through these things, and so he's, he's available to you.
Carrie, he gave us a number last time, or when we met openly, that I just, well, maybe it was, maybe it was in closed session, about, about those employees that got slid down in band and grade, or from band and grade for years experiencing, they, they went down in, in years on the scale of the, and the cost it would cost to, to change that, to move those, and I just, to me, that number was not correct. It just, it couldn't be correct, and I was just wondering how, maybe get, those are the numbers where I'm.
Are you speaking about specifically those individuals that were below market? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. The below market, how much would cost, I know every step is a, is every step even on the new scale 3%?
Uh, there's a little bit of variation, but roughly 3%, yeah.
But the number he gave, it's, it's not, it's not possible. I mean, he must have misspoke, because that number he said was not, in my mind, possible.
You're speaking about the double cost, the double of the cost.
For us to move employees to the scaled.
The current step they're on.
They slid over and they moved down.
If they're on 10, they'd start on 10.
Yeah, I think he did for probably countywide, probably not just those below market.
Yeah, because it wasn't a lot of money.
It was like 1.2 or something.
Yeah, it was above double.
It's just not, it's just not possible to be.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't read it the other day.
So you want clarification, is that what you're asking? For, okay.
Totally, yeah. Or 200 more. But now, now we're just adding 2%.
We have to, we have to move one way or the other, or one, we have to move some way, where we're at.
Well, there, I read through some of the PAQs we got, and, and I don't, I didn't agree with some of the descriptions, now, I'm not an expert, so I don't know necessarily if I'm right, but I just didn't agree with some of it, and that might be why some of the things are higher than they should be, but, and I don't, and I, I can't, I mean, we have to get rid of a couple titles if I'm involved for it, too, so.
Well, again, the, the titles, I mean, and that's where you kinda wanna look at job descriptions. If the job descriptions, like I said, if you have a group, just like the band and grade, if you have one duty that elevates you to that next level up, then your whole pay is, is reflective on that highest duty. Your pay reflects on your highest duty. That's what I'm saying, if you look at HR directors, and all that were looked, and if they are at a job description, and they're doing higher duties than what, than, than what we are, then they're gonna be at a higher band and, the old system, they would be at a higher band and grade, so they're gonna pay. So now you're throwing someone in that's not doing those duties into the whole pool, but most others are, then they're gonna get that benefit of that higher pay for those bands. So that's where this is, you know, 80% is fine, but if there's one thing that you, that elevates you to the higher band and grade in, in the whole group, if most of them are doing that, then that, then that transfers, well, now our HR person gets bumped up there, because most of them are doing that duty, even those ours is not. That's where I'm saying that the 80% does, is not fair. It's, it's a, it's, it's not, not that it's not fair, but it's not accurate all the time. And that's where I think we've fallen in, in some of these positions, where we're not, it's not accurate. It's, there's job, their job duties might be higher elevated, and some of our job duties, other areas don't do the same things. I mean, all, I don't know, I don't wanna throw names out there.
If you go in reverse, and I just refer to a few past positions in the highway compared to the group, positions here have a lot more responsibility than duties than the rest.
Yeah.
So it's not only that held us down, even though we're doing it.
I agree, but those.
It works both ways.
I agree.
You can pick anybody's job description and compare it to the neighboring county, and there's, it's not apples for apples.
No, it's a lot different, so.
Well, absolutely, and there's a lot of.
Compared the same.
Yeah, if you go to Menomen, the, the environmental guy is the zoning guy, it's the, you know, he's got all that, so, but he does very little compared to ours.
But once, but once you, if you elevate to that level, that's your whole pay scale in our band and grade. If you elevate to a higher level.
The band and grade, yes.
That's, that's your whole.
The point system's different.
But this point system, I think, is a lot different than that.
It is.
But are we comparing to band, band and grade points?
Well, I don't know, but maybe we should be looking at that and seeing where it's at. But I'm going by what he told me, which was that, I, I believe his words were a couple of points, and that it was very close.
Right, but again, he also said this is an art, not a science.
Yeah.
So there is a lot of, there's a lot of interpretations and assumptions made when you do these.
Do we have an email for Mark? Or phone number, contact information?
I can get that to you.
Would you give that to me? And would you also, I think there's been changes made to the scale since we got our paper copy?
Okay.
Could you email that out?
Yep.
I will then look at it, and we can go from there, and.
Need to get your questions answered, so next meeting, we, yay or nay?
You may need to hold next meeting for sure, yeah. I agree.
Spend more money or whatever, so.
So Commissioner Jebson, are you going to bring forth the positions that are in question, that you have questions, or do you need me to give him the list of what we, what the board's wishes are?
I, I mean, I, I will let him know what my, my.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure that I.
I don't know that I speak for the board, but.
Well, I, yeah. Because what I'm hearing thus far is the social service supervisors, the attorneys, clearly my position, I don't know if there's others.
Um, send me the updated scale.
Okay.
Cause I can't remem, I mean, I don't know right off the top of my head, but.
Sure.
Okay.
Eric, if you have another meeting, I'd like to be notified or included if possible, and if we need to have a full board. Erica, if you have another meeting, I'd like to be notified or included if possible. And if we need to have a full board or more than two, then I think we'll need to post it before our next meeting to have those discussions.
I think, yeah. Yep.
So with that, we'll have a kind of a, we'll have another discussion that hopefully will get some of those questions answered. And maybe we'll, we'll see some of those, see if job descriptions alleviate some of those questions or, or can change, or change those. But we'll go from there and we'll bring it back at our next board for some sort of decision, hopefully.
Would you like me to do my items since I'm up here? Would you like to go to the next person? I have two quick items. It's up to you. I can forego my seat if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead. You're here.
So I have two items for consideration. The first is combining two part-time custodial positions into one full-time. And this was actually a suggestion by a couple of the commissioners originally because we've had difficulty filling these positions.
That was through courthouse committee that Dave and I suggested that we, we can't fill the part times. This will cost us, did you get updated sheet?
I did, I did. I got it updated. I don't think, I, I believe what she, it doesn't matter. But the information that was given, the cost analysis of your packet, I did do some refiguring of the figure. They weren't, they were off. So roughly the difference between the two part-time, it's actually a total of 48 hours between those two positions. And then moving that into a full-time 40-hour position, the cost difference would be roughly right around $8,000 by the time you add in benefits and.
There'd be an $8,000 increase to go to. And what step was that new person at then?
We calculated it at step five, four or five in the, in the band and grade, the current system that we're in. And that wage is 1623 at step four.
At the current?
Band and grade, yes.
Band and grade?
Yes.
So if we hired that, would be the cost at step five at band and grade. Okay. Which is the board?
What is the, on the new scale?
This was a position that was quite under market. Again, I don't, I don't think I have that.
So I mean, we would be looking potentially at.
Yeah, it was a few dollars. They were off on the minimums.
2024.
Yes, if, if we pass, if the new scale goes through. Yeah, I only was able to go with the information that I had, so. Oh, you have it.
It would be nine, well, I don't, I guess that would be.
That would be starting 1944.
So yeah, it would be the difference. Correct.
Okay. Which is the board? So.
How long have these positions not been filled?
Since as long as I've been here, over a year.
And then we had asked Brent to come up with a, like, just discover if we need, actually needed them. And so he must have, he must have decided there, through the study, he must have figured out there's a need for it, so. Because we, because they'd been, we hadn't had them for so long that we asked him if there was really a need and.
Well, and we're getting requests from the jail too, that they have someone over there more consistent to keep an eye on things to.
Just floor cleaning.
Yeah, just cleaning, yeah.
Do we have anybody over at Human Services yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
But half of that job is, would be.
Was, was for Human Services.
And I think that should all be up for discussion because I think there are some unmet needs that have been brought forward. And I think we really need to position these positions and buildings and such to get the job done to the level that is acceptable.
Okay. Resolution 2B?
Yes.
I make a motion that we combine those two.
Approve resolution 2B?
Yeah, approve resolution 2B.
I will second.
Okay, second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So my second item for consideration is the new, you would have had this in your packet. And I know a couple of the commissioners sat in on the benefits committee and they were rates that the committee did come up with. Apparently there was some, I was not at the last meeting, but as I understand it, there was some discussion about where the committee was recommending as far as deductibles and where they wanted this to fall. And I did get some clarification yesterday from our broker, Steve. And really, at the end of the day, what this will look like is we would drop our high plan. We still have three levels within our medical insurance and the recommendation through Medica with two HSA options, one with a higher deductible. And as you can see, then the premium is lower. And then within that range, you also have two options. One is an open access plan where you can go where you choose and the clinic is not tied to that. And then if you, if you so choose the, you get the deduction at any point on any three of these levels to go through the Essentia network. Again, you have, so really what it's giving at the end of the day is three different cost levels, two HSA options, one with a higher deductible, one with a lower, and then that value plan that we had had before. We had a lot of discussion through committee. We have very few people on that high-end plan. And what that did by dropping that plan off of the, off of the pricing, then it brought the premiums down lower for, for the masses, if you will.
So the highlighted ones are what we were looking at, correct?
The yellows, yes.
And this is what the committee recommended. There was a lot of discussion whether the four or the 5,500. As you can, so entertain a, entertain a motion to support the benefits committee and move with the plans highlighted in yellow?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Erica. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Mary?
Thanks, Kerry.
Thanks, Kerry.
I believe all of the items under the finance minutes are on the agenda. So all I have is for tobacco license renewals, requesting a motion to approve.
Move to approve the sunlight, Jose's basin tackle, Toad Lake store and the 59er.
I'll second. I'll go ahead with you here.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Barry.
Well, as quick as you've been.
Denise.
We have a number of items. The first are some contracts and agreements. Letter A, the father's resource program is an MOU that's annually renewed and it's at the same rate as the last many years.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Both B and C are contracts with local school districts, Detroit Lakes and Frazee, having to do with child screening. And we have asked to increase the dollar amount to 70 per child. And both Detroit Lakes and Frazee have already agreed to that increase in rate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Letter D, we have a DHS crisis CAAF map contract amendment. And it was just the state was reallocating unspent funds.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion is second, and that dollar amount was 50.
No, it was.
57224.
57224.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have two personnel requests, both within the adult services unit based on a need in over 65. The first is the resolution 10232F for a full-time additional social worker to meet that need.
And I just wanted to make note that both of these positions essentially will pay for itself through revenue that.
Additional revenue.
Additional revenue that they will bring in.
And we, we talked about projected revenue and Denise made it real clear that we aren't going to make projections unless we're pretty darn sure, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Emma came to finance yesterday too and was, explained it a little bit to us.
Yeah, when she, when she got it explained to us, it made sense.
So I'll make a motion to approve 2A.
Motion?
I will second.
And a second? All those in, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And along with that staffing pattern request, resolution 10232G, we'd like to move one part-time adult services social worker to full-time to help also meet that need.
I'll make a motion to approve 2G.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Thank you.
I'm pretty close.
Like if we, what options we have.
We want to take a break.
Anyone need a break?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Or is he here? I don't think he's here.
Someone's going to be here for him, so.
Who's here for?
Wasn't Brian going to be here?
Well, he presented at finance and it's just.
Well, gives us a chance to reach out. We'll get someone here soon.
He's not here.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that one's easy.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, commissioners. One item for your consideration. We're, have a bid award. This work is for the regrading reconstruction of County Road 34, beginning at the city of Richwood and going approximately four miles east and north to 300th Street. We, we advertised and received 11 bidders and we had good results. The low bidder, who we are recommending award to is Dennis Drews out of the city of Fraser for $2,888, 814 cents, $814.79. This is 28% under engineer's estimate, so we're thankful for that. And I think the bidding climate for advertising in the fall here is good, so we did delay this project. We were hoping to start it this summer, but we were prohibited due to tree clearing as a result of those longer bats. But now they will be able to get that work done during the winter and kick off, kick off the project early in the spring and get going.
Motion approved 2A.
Second. Motion second to approve 2A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One thing Jim, we had mentioned to Brian, maybe after the project description, the, the name, maybe just put a brief summary like you stated what project it is. So, I mean, just looking at that, I wasn't exactly sure how far it was.
Sure.
It confused Mary.
It confused Mary.
Yeah.
And Jim, I'm not going to be able to make it to the road tour on Monday, so I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Jim, are you gonna go up to Toad Lake on your road tour?
Yeah, we can head that direction. I'd like to show you things in Fraser and we could swing through there if you'd like.
Run up to that spot. Okay, thank you Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have three items for your approval today. First one being Resolution 1023-2D, which is a donation from BTD. This would be used for water rescue equipment. And we, we thank them for their donation.
Right, this, this is actually a kit and it'll be in, each deputy, you have one. It'll be a throw, throw item and some inflatable.
Correct. Yeah. And the total amount is $10,040, $44.
Move to approve 2D.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, thanks, thanks to BTD for, hopefully this, hopefully this isn't needed to save a life, but if, if the circumstance comes, it's nice to be prepared.
Absolutely, yes.
So, express our thanks to BTD again for this generous donation. Okay, next item.
Thank you. Item number two, Resolution 1023-2H is a personnel request for a full-time deputy sheriff. This position would not be starting until, no earlier than March 1st, but I would like it no later either because of field training, which is a 14-week, up to a 14-week time period. So I'd like to have that person on the road, you know, starting June-ish.
Before summer.
Before summer, yeah.
Move 2H.
Second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then item three, item number three is a coroner, request for a coroner due to We, we have been using Ramsey County Medical Examiner's Office and, and they, I want to thank them for giving us that, that option. And, and we've been working quite well with them, but I do believe, you know, with our last coroner, Dr. Thorsgaard, and his passing, we, we are missing that element of having somebody locally. A lot of times, we, we would like that option to call somebody out to draw blood, or, or maybe we come across something where a bone is found and, and that, that person can say, you know, that's an animal bone, or let's, let's send it in for testing. We work with them, they work with us when it comes to autopsies for different crimes and unexpected deaths, of course. So, I do believe that there is a benefit to having that person locally as well.
So he's asking, I, I, we actually don't think this needs, needed to be coming to board because it's, it's in our budget, it's passed, and we went to emergency to do the, but we thought we'd update the board and, and he wants to see if there's any local doctors that would be willing to serve, and if so, we'd move in that direction if the sheriff desired.
And move forward, put an ad in the paper and.
Yeah. Essentially, that's all we're requesting, that was an ad.
Do you need a motion on that?
I don't, I don't know. Pat, do you think we need a motion being this is in the budget? It's, it was and we just emergency out of it, so I think it's.
You're correct on all those things. I just, it, I mean, you went from a medical examiner, although it was interim, but you guys weren't sure you were gonna continue with the coroner, so I'll leave that up to you, but, but it is budgeted. We're budgeting it for a coroner. We're just paying the coroner money for the Midwest examiner and now we'll be going back to the coroner. I think there's a record here. I think if you want to just move on, fine, but you could certainly do a motion.
A motion to advertise and move forward.
I'll make a motion to advertise for county coroner.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Steve. At finance yesterday, asked Steve to put together a, no, here's, here's a good example of a, something for the paper, if you wanted to put something. He handed out this, remember we asked a summary for the, for the press to look at for the. Thank you, Steve, for this document. It gives a little bit more information on how we can, so, cash flow this and move forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. I have two items before us and, and it's a subject that we've talked about for quite a while. We do have a waste hauling contract with BMT Transfer right now, and it's a three-year contract. We're in the third year and they have an option to renew it at the same terms if they desire to do so, and they, they would like an increase of 15%. There also came up some other items when we talked with neighboring counties about better coordinating the movement of solid waste, and so we're talking about coordinating with Clay County. We have ways to go to the Fargo landfill, they have ways to ask to go to perm, and we talked about possibly making it more efficient by having trucks haul loaded waste both ways. In conversations with Clay County, we asked them if they would allow our contractor to pull our trailers, and they did not want to do that. And so we looked at possibly buying our own trucks and trailers, so we got pricing in this, and we went through committee, number of committee meetings with this, and so I got some pricing on walking floor trailers. The low prices was from Wilken Industries down in Morris. Total amount would be in the neighborhood of $116,000 per trailer. And also we got some pricing on two tractors, one of Volvo and then also Peterbilt. And I haven't got the updated pricing on the Volvo, which includes a wet kit. They just didn't get it, get it to me today yet. The Volvo is gonna be in, investment would be in that $650,000 range. Also, we would have to hire a truck driver, a full-time truck driver, so my ask is to allow us to go ahead and purchase this equipment and then approve Resolution 1023-2E to post and advertise and hire a full-time truck driver. The contract with, with BMT would expire at the end of November and we should be able to get.
So, don't vote for one of these and not the other. We need them both or none.
Yeah.
We need the trucks and the driver or neither, either or, so.
And we should save a considerable amount of money.
Especially if, if the things fall into play where we can backhaul and coordinate.
Instead of driving empty one way.
Correct.
Clay County is real receptive and they're, they're pushing to get an agreement and start doing this, because they can see a saving also.
Just, just a point, just a point of, so if we haul, if we backhaul to Becker County garbage, or if we, or if we swap even Clay County garbage that goes to the landfill, and this is where the MOU is, we are responsible forever for that garbage. So that's, that's where the, there's a little bit of a, that's why this MOU is important, you gotta have it, because if, if we're, we're swapping garbage and we're hauling here and they're hauling there, that garbage essentially is ours, and there's a long-term forever obligation. If something happens at the Fargo landfill, that percentage-wise, it goes to all the entities that have hauled there. So, there is a liability, but.
Which we have already.
We already have it, so.
Right, but if we haul this garbage to the incinerator, there's no liability.
No, we don't have a lot of garbage that goes.
Yeah, we still have to, we still have to have.
I'm just saying, it increases our, it increases our percentage of garbage because we have to assume that Clay County garbage in our name, and we haul our garbage to the incinerator, so.
Without, unless we have the MOU.
Well, we have to have the MOU to, to do that, but I'm just saying that it has a little, has a little bit of an added risk, or a little, little bit of added liability because now we are assuming that garbage that go to the landfill where our garbage would go to the incinerator.
Gotcha.
But, cash flow, it's a great benefit to us, great benefit. So.
Any questions?
I think, I think you've done your homework and convinced your committee, and I think in finance, you've convinced.
Well, we've discussed it for quite a while.
We've looked at it for a long time.
First, we didn't really want to go this way, but then we look at the savings and issues with the large increase in our proposal.
Well, and then the fact that if we don't do this, we can't be loaded both ways. So that's where it's good, that's just good for the environment, it's good, just good for everything.
Yep.
And so that's why, that's why we have to have our own trailers.
Basically, Clay County won't allow a private to pull their trailers, but Becker County can, and Clay County can pull each other's trailers.
So.
So, go ahead. With that being said, wish to the board.
We, we need to prove them separate or do them at one time? Because they, they go together.
Do both at the same time.
Yeah, they're together.
Well, one's.
First one need a driver.
Yeah, need a driver, yeah.
You need a driver going.
Yeah.
It's in, the second one's in resolution form, so.
So the first one, I was talking before the meeting here a little bit with Commissioner Holczen about approval or reviewing of the tractors. Do you want to go, just go with a little quote between the two?
Yeah, we don't want that pack car, because I, I called.
So I did some checking on it too.
We don't want that engine.
So we got a, a quote from Volvo on a new one.
Did it say what engine's in there?
I did, I haven't had a chance to review it. I guess what I would like, if, if the board is okay with this, is to review this with the two committee members and then.
Yeah, because we're, we're not.
That forward.
We, we could possibly find another truck, because I did talk to, talk to some people about those trucks, so we should not be nailed down to either one of those trucks.
So I got information on the one with Cummins?
The Volvo.
Does the Volvo have a Cummins?
So let's, let's do this. If, if the board.
D-13.
If the board's willing, authorize the purchase of a, of a semi-tractor and the four trailers for up to the 651, or can you get, is it gonna be more?
No, it won't be more, it shouldn't be more than that.
So up to the total cost estimate of 651,976, or 796.
I'll make a motion that we.
And that gives, and authorize the committee to make the final decision on the type, on the, on the tractor. Okay, you make, settle your motion?
Yeah.
So move, her second.
We have a motion in second, any discussion?
The only thing, we've gotta act on it pretty quick because.
We do have to.
Because these trucks are in stock now, and if we don't act, they're gone and.
And we need.
There's not a lot, sitting on lots.
There ain't none.
No, and they're not right now making a lot.
No. So, yeah, we do gotta move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now 2E, to the truck driver.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve 2E.
By Dave, second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Planning zoning.
Good morning, I just have planning commission recommendations from our last meeting, were tabled. I did do some further research. The ordinance does distinguish between 20-acre parcels and less, so if you have 21 acres on a lake, there's no setback for animals. If it's 20 acres or less, there's a 300-foot setback, unless they're domestic, which Brian and I conferred over here, and we don't see these goats being domestic, so they would be, need to be a minimum of 300, because she is at about 60 acres plus or minus. Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You are, but me and Brian just determined this this morning, so I was gonna explain it to you as well, but.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Linda, is your name Linda?
Yes, it is.
Would you just state your, you know, if you, we, if there's any questions for you or if you have a comment, we're talking about your application to change of zone at this time.
Okay.
So, we got your email.
Okay.
And you're looking at possibly make four goats for, for clearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you understand that according to the ordinance or to, is it an ordinance or are they, it's a zoning ordinance, they're not to be within 300 feet of the recreation lake then?
That's not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah. I have it marked at 100, but I can easily take it to 300.
Okay. So this is the only thing, Kyle, do you have anything else to add?
No, I, she identified the four goats and, did you get the letter?
Yep, yep.
So we're not, we don't have the authority to restrict the number of animals you have, but four is a very reasonable, reasonable amount and, but the only thing is that it's not, they're not permitted 300 feet from the lake.
That's not a problem. I can take care of that.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Do they each have names?
Excuse me?
Name the goats.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this?
John, Eric, Richard, that's the name.
Do you want, did you want to add anything or?
What, can I?
If you, why don't you just come up and ask your question, state your name and ask your question then.
What kind of fencing? I'm Gary Roth, I live on Pearl Lake.
Okay.
And I'm wondering what kind of fencing, will there be a building with the goats? To house the goats?
So what we're, what we're, it's unfortunate because we are not, we can't, we could ask that question and if, how you wanna, how you wanna, but we can't require anything. The, what she's asking for is just to change the one parcel into, into, combine them so they can, so she can have goats on that parcel too.
Correct.
Still can't be within 300 feet of the lake.
Correct.
So what we're, we could, because my question to our attorney was, can we put restrictions on it like must be, you know, different types of fencing or buildings, and we can't. So we're just looking at the zone, but we can ask, do you, do you plan on housing them in the winter? And this is, this is not determining whether you can, that we're allowing what you're asking for, this is just kind of for general knowledge, just questions and.
Like I said, my parents own the 70 acres across the street.
Okay.
So in the, for housing in the winter, we can remove them, place them there, and bring them onto the property just to do the environmental aspect that we.
And I think what you're asking for, you know, it's sometimes, you know, in today's world, there are people out there that are not completely honest. I don't know if you know that, but if, what your intentions are, what they seem like are very respectful of the, of the community and the lake.
True.
Certainly hope, hope you'd continue that.
Yes.
And, and move forward like that, because I think you're, you know, you, when the possibilities are out there that you could have 70 animals on this parcel, that does raise large concerns, and I think that the residents in that area are justified in those concerns. I, I'm hopeful that you are stating like you, you are, as you intend.
Yes, absolutely. If I wanted to put that many goats out there, they would be going across the street, and my parents land out on lake.
Okay.
They're specific there to environmentally take care of what we play.
So if you, on your goats, you plan on moving them into a, obviously they have to have some sheltered area, but, and I will, would ask that, and this is not gonna be in the motion or anything, but that if they are in a confined area, that you manage that waste, the manure in a, in a appropriate manner, just like you would normally, but just like you do with your dogs or your animals.
Correct.
So, with that, did you have any other questions or?
Is it restricted to goats or one does it pass? Can it be any type of animal?
It could be any type of animal, yes. But there is, there's restrictions on the lake, the lake setback, and then there would also be, each animal has a different animal unit, so they're, they're sized differently. You wouldn't be able to, the good thing you have going for you is that has to, that 300-foot back from the lake. So even if it was, even if it was cattle, unless you concentrated in there, I don't think, if they just graze in there and move out, I don't think we're gonna have a problem. But if it does become a problem, then we start going into other ordinances and rules. But I don't, I don't think, I'm very optimistic that this is gonna be non-intrusive to the area, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Move to concur upon against zoning.
Second. We have a motion second, that's to allow the change of zone. I do want to thank you for showing up today.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for, I know your intent, I feel like your intentions are good, so.
You read my letter.
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So, thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you Kyle and Brian for doing that research for us and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did your feet hurt? Is that your fault or was that yours?
It wasn't mine.
Thank you, Linda. Welcome you to the neighborhood and see, hope to see you out.
Be back. Oh, that was great.
Do you have an update on the comp plan?
Yeah, just want to make sure that you all got an invite for a one-hour-long workshop on the 31st.
Mm-hmm.
I did not, well, you know, someone emailed me something, well, Mary Roder said, she tried to email my county and it was, said it was blocked.
Huh.
Well, I don't know. She said, I just emailed it, you know, it was blocked. What's, what's Marty Pants over there?
I think it came from Robin, right?
Should've came from Robin Kaufman.
I'll have to look.
It came from Robin, yeah.
I'll have to look. I may have.
The one on the 31st.
Barry Nelson, the name's on here.
Yeah, but.
That's probably the big, I mean, we did go live with the website, there's a survey, there's the definition and explanations on a comp plan and the zoning code and whatnot. This week, we'll be sending out the, the same surveys to stakeholders. We talked about using some of the farmers from our add-out committee to cover that basis, and obviously the Isaac Walton League, Bill Hanky, and we also want to get in touch with some business folks from the community, probably BTD team, some of those folks, and then as well as just COLA, SWCD and whatnot. well as just COLA, SWCD and whatnot.
Robin Kaufman.
Robin Kaufman.
So then, Pat did suggest too, like we take this fact sheet, it has a QR code, we'll put that around strategically in certain places, not only just the building, like in the DMV where people are staring at the wall.
Those people that have shown interest in like the VRBOs, make sure they're...
Sure.
Make sure they're sent, and anyone, any other ordinance that we've had discussion on, can you make sure anyone that's shown interest, at least that they have the invite?
Is this a team?
And you plan on being there on Thursday night?
Yes.
Is this a...
And your Thursday night for the township, so you even mentioned that the ordinance, maybe mention the ordinances that are subject to review from this committee.
Okay.
You know, the VRBO is the, is the penalty, penalties...
Enforcement.
Enforcement, so just mention the ones that are, and so if they have input, then to make sure that they have those.
The board, I hope support this, but that fact sheet, make some copies, you can have them at the tables, people can walk out with them.
We'll go around town, put them at certain bulletins, I guess, I don't, hopefully we get the feedback. And solar and wind is gonna become, it's my understanding that the state legislator has indicated that they want 100% renewable energy by 2040, so there's probably gonna be a large expansion in solar and wind, like faster than we think.
So you're saying we should consider a zone, ordinance for that?
100%, and probably focus on it heavier than we initially thought.
Maybe look at getting a secret underground propane tank. Well, I'm just saying.
I don't know that our county is ideal.
I don't know how secret it's gonna be anymore, that you said it.
I think there are, are better spots than others, but I mean, if the landowner wants, my opinion, the landowner wants to sell to a solar farm, I don't know why you would restrict that.
I'm not, I'm, I don't either, I just want you to be aware of it, that...
I mean, best, best use, you know, especially if under, if we have, I think in the past we've talked about, if there's gravel under even a development, it'd be nice to get that good gravel out of developments because there's a limited number of gravel.
There's a very limited.
Would that be a conditional use permit?
More limited.
Solar, yeah, yeah.
Most of the cars are, states are out of county.
Yeah, but, you know, I look at, I look at how, where we're moving and it's, we are, we're moving fast, I mean, we have an electric car. Now, again, I'm not promoting everyone to get an electric car at this time, because I don't think our infrastructure's there, but for us to be able to drive 280 miles on one, one fill of electricity at night, I mean, it's, and that costs, you can get down to 5.5 cents a kilowatt hour, which would cost you about 5,000 hours a year, it's, what is that, it's like 300 bucks, do the math. They estimate five, 5,000 kilowatts, what, they say four, I go five, because I drive more, times .055, $275 a year for electricity. Now we went, so I'm just saying, in the right scenarios, we can, we only charge overnight to get the lower rate, but I don't, enough, getting, changing something, but don't, don't go buy one if it's your only car, it's my mom, don't, if it's your only vehicle, don't buy one.
That guy tried to take his family on a vacation, he ended up, I think he left Canada, he ended up leaving it down here by Clearwater somewhere and renting a car, so I mean, you know, yeah, don't go too far.
I mean, I would just, you have to know what you're getting into, I would not, I would not, we're not there yet.
No.
But I think it's a good direction. Anyone else, anything, thank you, Kyle.
Let's make sure you got that then.
Yeah, I got it, I checked, I got it Wednesday. Been a, been a very hectic week, so...
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
There you go.
Thank you, Kyle, thank you, Brian, Todd, Nate, Pat, Peggy, I almost spelled Carrie, Mary.
Just saying thanks.
Pete.
Are we adjourned officially, sir?
I think we're adjourned.